Um, so what I have put in your books tonight, the budget hearing. So what the first page is, is that is everything condensed from all those pages behind it is the is the budget. Those are every line item that we're working with. Um, and so this is the condensed down version of that. So you can see that um we've already went over the general fund information. Um, we did have some changes with the general fund, but I I had calculated an additional staff number in the ambulance. And so Dave and I went back over that and we and we corrected that. And I believe is that correcting that we're that the departments agreeing with us now or were we to be or?
Totally. I think they were slow a little bit high, but um. Lee and I talked $200 hours. I think part of that they did give us work out of the rounding and things like that. They were looking at people like 400 hours, 800 hours. And when we put it together, she was rounding halftime for full time. So I think with the $200, I think the number's there. And with that change, with that person coming out of bed, is I think that dropped it from like 503 to 454 or something.
Yeah, yeah.
So it it's not $50,000 less just for that one person.
Mm-hmm. And we still, and and the other thing is is so part of the, there's 25% of the firing ambulance we use that that covers Sandy Henderson's janitorial wages. So um and that's one thing that they didn't mention that. Yeah, so and then um the stipend is still in there. And right now, the budget amendment, our new budget hearing had been, we were out of time. So everything is set in the budget. It it's set to be approved and then I'll have some notes to go over with Dave of what we'll have to do for maintenance after the first of the year. Um, and just again, remember if these are estimates, um, we're just trying to calculate as close as we can. And I typically have a practice of going a little higher um versus going lower. And I mean, I think most of us know with any budget to work with, I want to kind of estimate high with anticipation of. Um, I did calculate insurance and health insurance and everything based on the percentages that were provided to us for increases. Um, the health insurance was very low. Um, it was under 5%. And then the tort liability, which is all of our insurance for our buildings and grounds and our vehicles. Um, the communication I had that it was gonna have, I think we're about a 15% increase. And that's out of our control. I mean, it's nothing that we've done. It's just that's market. And then um but the good news is is our workman's comp. Um, we've got some cases that are coming off of that. So we will be in a better position with our percentages. What's difficult with the tort liability is that those renewals come due by April. And I've got to submit a, you know, we have to submit a budget in March. So again, those are estimates and typically depending on if we have some different percentages than we've been having them through that. Um, but I always, since I started doing the budget, I'm trying to stay, when it comes to tort liability, in the 15% range to calculate it up, just trying to prepare for whatever the market is saying it's going to be. So.
And I think the least that you that that was changed on fire side was they had 16,000 or on the end side was 16,000 for the stipend for the volunteers that have been running quite, that have been running a little bit higher. So we've got that.
Yeah. Um, so for the ambulance where it says the 2021, you know, on beach five, the 2021, 22 budget um miscellaneous is zero. And then the past year is it's 21,000 and 12,000, then it jumps to 250,000. So can you explain just why? Yeah. So we, I have to really transfer in that 250,000 is that dollar amount that we talked about. And we have to have in order to balance the budget. We just don't have a transfer in line. So that's why it's sitting in the miscellaneous line. Okay. And is that money from the reserve that they're pulling? And so if they are, cause I, from what I spoke with with Kurt, you can see, and it sounds like they're still under budget now, nowhere near to this. And I know we're adding staff and stuff like that, but so if they were, if we were to approve this this way, they took that out of the reserve, would it be put back?
It only gets transferred when it's necessary.
When it needs to be. Okay, perfect.
It will work, I mean, it will work with the money that they have in the round, in the end, at this point where the revenue is not coming in as quick as their expenses and we will transfer. We'll transfer what we need, but that's kind of the last.
Awesome. That's what I, that makes sense. Yeah, we have what's called hearing transfers. And so just as Dave was saying, we have to estimate based on what we're estimating the expenditures to be, we have to estimate how we're gonna cover that ruble. Or cover that expense. And so then we only transfer anything that's applying the ruble. And that's how it's always been transferred. It's not always following what it was in the budget. It's following what the actual expenditures are. Less employee benefits because we let it for that. Yep, okay. So it's just their expenses only. So um. So first I'll get started. Um. In the, in your book here, we have what we call the special revenues. And that is um in special revenues is road use tax dollars and um local option sales tax, um tax increment finance. It's on its own, but it's still a special revenue. So let me get to the, to the page. So I can show you. Up in the, up in the left hand corner, it will tell you, um, for example, let's say general fund, public safety. So what we're looking for right now is the number, it's gonna say 110 road use. And I'll see if I can get the number. Cause each department has a number. So if I tell you a number, it may be within that packet of that department. So.
And the number of each road use is is a number supplied to a state. And that very, they'll give us, I mean, it's what you're talking to or reasonable.
They give us like, yeah, they give us an estimate. Yep. And it's, um, I think it's this year's 226.5 times our per capita. Yeah. So it's just as. Um, it says 110, then road use tax, public works. And then it's revenues underneath. And are these in order? They are. Yeah. So we know that it's, those are in line and then it goes to those, they go to three, yeah. And I apologize, they didn't have transit. They put six in there. Find it? The high chair? No. This function. I just have page one at the top and it'll say 110 right here. Road use. I literally opened it. So the page there with the revenue, that is our estimate for 22, 23. That's the estimate for road use. But um when I was looking at the the state report, um they're saying that the 226.5 is less than what we should anticipate. Um, they're thinking that we're, we're gonna have more in the upwards of 500,000. But I just stayed with what the per capita rate was. So if we get a little bit more, then that stays in the road use reserve, to use it for future. Okay? And so, so we have 486, 400. That's what we're estimating. Yeah. And I just left it because our, our per capita the year before was about the same se- same amount, only 50 cents difference. So um. And even though it says approved, it's just that's how the report runs. But. So then on the next page is we go into the public works roadway maintenance. Um, there are two sections here for roadway maintenance. There is what's just the the street maintenance. And then you have a section that is for snow removal and um and street clean. These, and the reason for this, it falls back to um the Iowa Department of Transportation has us do what's called a a road use report. And I know Diane had experience with that when she worked for the county. So that's, that's the reason why there's some separation here with these dollars because when it comes to that Department of Transportation report, that's, that helps us to make sure we can put those numbers in that report. If I explain that. So the first page is road use and second is snow road. Yep, snow damage. And that's it. It's really all the same fund, road use. It's just it's broken down by that because it like you have to report it in those separate areas to the Department of Transportation. So um first off there, you just, again, you have our wages and our benefits. And that's just in line. We have um budget in there is for Adam and I have Eddie Ortiz. Um, so they're the percentage that's in the roadway maintenance. And they're split between um the street and then the ma- and I just call it road maintenance portion of it on street cleaning, snow removal. And their wages are based on um with their current wages. And then it's based on our wage matrix that we have. And what I do is I just calculate the highest percentage. Um, so if this year, when they get ready to do their evaluations, you know, depending on what their wage is going to be calculated at, um, at least if I calculated it the highest possible percentage, then we're not in a position where we're gonna fall short in those wages. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's the way to pay, but that's just what we're calculating it at for their evaluations. And so then in that section, we move to repairs and utilities and contractual services on in there. So the repairment and the maintenance and utilities, what that is pertaining to is just, just what it's saying there. Those are streets and alleys and projects that we have. Um, the purpose of road use tax dollars is to um improve and to upgrade and fix streets in our community. And and Adam really does a nice job. Um, I think that we've got his over there. I I believe in Adam, you can speak at any time. I think what we've got budgeted there for building and grounds and road, um. I know we've got alley work that's gonna be done. We're gonna do um steel coat or. I'll kind of let you guys pick over from.
Hey, you're doing good.
How come, how come under repair maintenance and utilities, the utility services went from 3300 down to 200?
The utility part of it?
Yeah.
From 21, 22 to 22. Because I, it's under a solid waste because it's really that utility is just their garage.
Oh, okay.
Hmm. And so what I'm doing is I'm trying to divert the money over into more of the wages and the maintenance side of it. Um, and I can come back and we can amend it and we can move utilities back over, but it is their shop downtown or their shop is really what that falls under. So that'll be the same for whether it's another agility, or I mean electric or water. Mm-hmm. There, so it's all for our electric, water and sewer. It's all internally charged to the fund. But we're really just paying ourselves. It's, it's paperwork to say, yes, we're charging our departments for their utilities. But it's really coming back to the, it really stays with the city with them. But it's money from the state. Uh-uh. Yeah. The road use money is from the state, it's tax dollars. But we're charging those tax dollars for utilities that maybe it's gonna stay, but it's not going anywhere. The only other one would be their heat, which is their gas utility. So and the bigger cost of that is more of the, seems to be in front, it's if a recycle center is probably, because you have a radiator right there.
Yeah, those are ones running, wanting to get to like 40, 50 degrees going on. And Adam's uh work of the roadway maintenance, that fund that's the 800, he had that half of chips, you know, some concrete work that he just still will do.
Throughout the city or do you have a specific area that would just?
Um, there'll be a couple spots what we'll be doing. Um those spots on 14, 15, or 14, 16th area, um, Cali Room, there's some spots on Allen. I just want to think about right around the bend. There's a handful of spots I'd want to do ourselves, see how it goes.
And then what about that divot in Miller? Does that include any of that?
No.
Oh, okay. So the um the capital equipment purchase for that fund, I have some notes there. On the next page over is page four, um, that is talking about the the dump truck. Um, and that's also talking about um the repairing of the surface alleyways um of downtown. Page four? Yep. The capital in. Yeah, the, and the surface there is not really a capital improvement. It's really a, it's just a roadway maintenance. Well, those are just the notes that I put in there from. So that's only on the line item for capital equipment. Capital equipment is the dump truck and 70?
It's, it's, it's a 550. It's a like a one, what type of one? Uh, it's, it's not 550. You need to cancel a month ago, get approved. Uh, there'll be a plow with it too, with the dyno. To replace our, bust it out one time. Came out to a 75.
Your truck's so expensive, it says 70.
They all are.
I know. I wanted to go buy that because I want to pick you up. And I was like, well, what's it gonna be? Well, buy a Tesla. You can buy it out of the old truck. Or is that going to Nick? Is that the one?
I guess I was just confused because there's an entry.
Yeah, that, 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 that truck was going back though.
Cause I put it under the, their. That's a tomorrow. Improvement. Yeah, because in the Department of Transportation report, it's not considered a capital improvement. It's considered roadway maintenance. But we at the city call um, because of the, the amount it's called, we we call it a capital hourly. Okay. And you just put it under line item capital equipment? I just put the notes there for the 70. It's actually part of the roadway maintenance. So the repair, maintenance, utilities, when we do the streets, like the gypsy and all that, that's under like the 6310, 6317, 6321. Yep, those are part of this. Yep. That's for like uh doing the streets and stuff?
Yeah, crack season.
And again, those bids and those things can change between, I mean, we've seen it where we've gotten a bid in for a smaller amount, but then by the time you get into the season of doing the work, it's a possibility that the material is gonna go up and then we'll have to give a budget amendment. Um, this Adam has no control over. I mean, they base it on a price right now. But when you get into the season of doing the work, it doesn't, you know, those supply and demand of it, of what they use for the product, it go up.
Or you may be doing less work. I mean, it all comes down to Adam and doing the evaluation of streets and figure out which ones you know, I mean, he, he may have had streets last fall. Yeah, they, they changed over. So streets that he thought last fall might even be still going to this year, maybe off the list, it may have other ones. But hope try to work within that budget to see if it's, uh, the, and depending on cost, I mean, the price of oils, what's really moving take this year. On the chip deal.
And then moving on to page five, again, it's just like I said, it's all within the road use tax dollars. It's just broken down based on street cleaning and snow removal. The street cleaning portion of it is just, just that. We have contractual services. Um, we still have on our street cleaner, we did a lease agreement with that. So that's our annual payment for that. And then um the capital equipment that uh we budgeted for here is for snowfall.
Mm-hmm, 755.
Is that the 10, 5? Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And that's the private go for the truck.
Yeah, they're all working on the other trucks too, I think.
So then that's all for the road use. Jose, Jose 10, holiday. He had another, for example.
Okay.
Page for 321. So then on page seven, it gives me our bottom line for total expenses would be 619, 300. And granted, I know we're looking at our revenue coming in, it's gonna be 400 and some thousand. But we've had additional revenue come in in the past. So we have definitely setting in our road use money um that will cover any additional costs. But again, we just have to manage it as we're going through the year. Um, and see where we're at with our, with our road use dollars. The thing of it is is that if we don't, as, as a city, if you don't show that you're using that road use tax money, then you know, that they're gonna say, oh, well, you're not doing that. So that could affect how many dollars you're getting. So we definitely want to show the need of purchasing equipment and doing the work and the staffing. So. And then the, the difference, if I understand this correctly, say you're getting what you are considerably planning on, but um you get that or less than the remainder, the difference, do we just amend the budget because we can't afford it? Or do we take it out of what, is there a carryover from road use from? Yep, that's just if you, so with road use tax and your local option sales tax and the special funds, they carry a cash balance. So whatever you don't use stays in that cash balance. And you can, that's what you can use. Um, because the idea is that, you know, if you do have it left over, then you reserve it for future work. Um, but at the same time, if you, if you're not using it and and you're just building it up, then you give an opportunity to the state to say, what are you doing with roads? Um, you're building it up, but you're putting it up too much or we'll take it away. Do they take it away or like peddling people? No. Not, not the, not the leftover, but that maybe last the next year. You, you could potentially be in a position, I mean, I've never heard of it happening, but that's one thing. For the Department of Transportation, yeah, the Department of Transportation, you will, when I go out to their meetings, that's what they're saying. You know, if you're not showing the use of every dollar of your road use, then they're gonna say, oh, we're gonna lower the per capital percentage because everybody's not really using that money. And I've never seen that be the case. Does that change every year or per administration?
It can change every year. Yeah. I mean, a lot of that's based upon your um sale of fuel in the state. Where you think that. So but they'll, but they'll have projections. And they typically look down three to four years and that. But you, you may get a set of numbers like this year for the next couple of years and the next year. You may have, like, they may say, oh, the following year, you're gonna do 270. Well, it, it could, next year it could be 268, it could be, they could say it'll be 270 because it's just constant fluctuation there. Kind of monitoring that. But they, but they're trying to, you know, give us the best estimate they got of all. Yeah, they usually, I mean, at least in my past, it's worked out of the OT here. Pretty close, you know.
Yeah, they're saying, um, so they give you like a five year. And so for fiscal year 2023, they're saying if they're basing it to 126.50, 50 cents. And then, you know, next year, 127. So it basically goes up at almost a dollar every year. But again, it's not, I mean, next year, they're gonna come out with another report and they're gonna say, nope, but it's gonna be this for the next, you know. Just depends on, just like as Dave is saying, how much we're traveling, how much people are spending in fuel and you know, what's being impacted by taxes. It would be one tax less. So this last year, they said, um, they were surprised at the state, they were surprised because they anticipated that we'd see uh a huge reduction in road use tax. But quite the opposite, I think it's like almost 5% increase. So it really shocked, you know, the state level thinking because they thought traveling and all of that would really be, you know, impact and they're gonna be looking at less road tax money, road use tax money. And it was the opposite, it was up by 5%. So. Doesn't make sense. Unless they, a couple of years, unless they're aging it, you know, year prior, they're not caught up, like they're not estimating on a current year, you know. So for them, it would have been during COVID, keep it, because they know that's when they come out with their report this fall. That would have, it should have impacted it to show over, but it didn't. So the only thing I think that I understood, just listening to the discussion back and forth, is that that may have dropped off, but when we opened the doors, then everybody went. And so it. A lot of people transportation was closed down too. So people had to use their own cars and their, the new stuff. So. But I don't know, Diane, in your years of doing the road use, I mean, I've really not seen it fluctuate terribly much. It, it's pretty much a steady, pretty, yeah. And looking back through, like back to 2012, when I first came on, it stayed pretty average at that, like 480 bucks. So last year was probably the largest that I've seen. Last couple of years is the larger part that I've seen that we got extra additional. So the next um section um we have is that's on road use. It needs to skip over the special revenue fund because we don't have any activity in that. That was used for FEMA funds. And then you're gonna get to 121, which is local option sales tax. So local option sales tax, again, it's estimated higher. Um, and this all started going up. One, the pandemic increased a little bit more, but when the state passed that um internet sales, I bet it, 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 it increased our revenue by about 125,000. Yeah, because the, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yep. So that was when the government started paying, making internet sales, paying local taxes, right? So and then what happens with that, you talked about this before, it gets split. Um, if you look at page, uh, page four, um, that's just the percentage of the, of the breakdown. So a third, a third, a third. So we have a third that goes to general fund, a third that goes to the street fund or capital project fund. And then you have a third that's split between the parks and the library. The third that's going into the general fund, then it'll get divided out because we have an equipment revolving plan. So that's where we'll have 25,000. That'll go, we talked about this last time, that's where we'll have that 25,000 go to the P3. Yes. And then our um other portion of that, um, we had talked about moving to get the, whatever maybe we have left or whatever we can work with. And, and if we have an additional amount, we want to move it to the pool project to get that. Inherent with that having to do debt on it, if we don't have to. So then the TIF portion is 125. So the TIF, um, so Diane and Kara, they, when they were here in December, what we have to do is and we have to levy those uh tax dollars with the county. So it's a portion off of property taxes that we're allocating and asking to take. to take care of development rebates, to also fund some wages and staffing at the city, and it's, it also includes the Wili dollars, um, that we pay for our contribution for development, and then the hundred thousand dollars that we do for the grants, um, for economic development. So, um, the other part of it is, is we have two general obligation bonds, um, for road projects, and that is, um, also one hundred percent tipped through them, so that is the total revenue that we requested from the county to pull up a property tax portion, um, for those items. So you have the revenue come in, and then you have the expenditure go out. So in my tip, in our budget, and on our worksheet here, this amount is the exact amount that we're supposed to do for rebate, but if you remember when we went through budget, what I put on the state budget is the revenue that we're, or the expenditure that we're gonna pay out, because we have an overpayment, I think it was about a six thousand dollars, but what I went in on our worksheet was what the actual rebate dollars were, and then I'll break it down to make it so it's the actual amount. And the reason why it's, because our paperwork versus our state budget, I want our state budget to balance with the urban renewal. So, and that's kind of what Taylor, we had kind of talked about, and so I have to look at Taylor on those reports. Um, so what I have budgeted here is what the actual amount of TIP rebate is supposed to be that was requested by DPOC, but it's not what he's gonna get paid out. Okay, and we'll get to that because that would be, um, when we make that transaction, um, I amended the annual uh, contribution to be what the dollars are, and that's again, what Taylor talked about that we've been working through.
So the state figures is what's written here.
The um, county figure of what we applied.
What you're gonna extend, or?
Yes, because we want to collect the money that's owed to us.
Yeah.
So we wanna collect the hundred percent of the rebate that's applied for, and so that'll go into our TIP revenue, but I'm going to only expense what's due. So then that way, we're, we're getting the money back that we were working.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah.
So the next portion is, um, again, it's a null account, um, it was a, the Dutton Complex Trust and Agency was put together when they did the project.
And even though it's inactive, it still shows up on our reports.
Which page are you on?
I'm on, it says one three zero Dutton, T N O. And it's not kind of teeny, I know what you're, it's just not.
You're the only one who can tell.
No, I was the only one thinking it.
I knew it.
Great mindset.
You're aggressive.
Okay, and so then, the next section, we had already talked about this, so this is the fire trust and agency. One thirty-one is where donations go, memorial donations. Any type of donations that the department instructs us when they receive, and when they instruct us, or we get anything that states fire donation or memorial fund, all of those dollars go into the trust and agency. I, I put a two thousand dollar figure up there as what we're estimating for revenue, but it does, I just don't know. Um, and then it was my understanding that from the trust and agency, they, they're gonna continue to fundraise for the gator and the gear, but we have to balance out the revenue and expenditure, so we put it in the trust and agency because the communication was, it would be the request money from Maryland and Ivory, that they, if they don't raise enough dollars, that they would be using to purchase those items, um. Yep, for a memorial, yep. So from this, they only had five hundred dollars last fiscal year.
The, no, that's a budget amount, it's not what the actual was, because my feeling is the budget.
The actual, the actual is pretty much, so.
Gotcha, yeah. Okay, yeah, oh, yep, I see it now, actual, yep, yep. So then, um, the library trust is one thirty-four, and I'm not gonna, I mean, that's the, that's the budget area where, again, that's our trust and agency. Um, that's where donation dollars go into, where requests go into, and that's where we move money for, for example, they're gonna be using money for their building upgrade, um, for getting equipment, uh, additional purchases comes from, the trust and agency. So I wanna, unless you have any other questions, um, I'm gonna skip over to the the two hundred is called debt service. It's the two hundred and a debt service. Wanna add zeros? Yep. And the reason why it has zeros is because we already have debt in that fund, and so we're not levying any dollars for taxes. We're gonna pay it out of the balance, it's already there, so we have a, um, an expense when you get down to page, um, so, oh, so we have an expense on that of a hundred and, I don't know why it's not showing up. Because it's on my form, because I had to build it in on our budget, so it's, um, I think it's a hundred and, around a hundred and forty thousand, but that bond is, I'll have to get that number. What that bond is, is that is the library, and that is the phase one of City Hall that we refinanced for, for a lower rate, which was really good because we were able to get a lower rate, we didn't have to extend the term, um, and our payments reduced too, so, um, so that is, debt service is where we pay basically our loan payment, that's the purpose of debt. And then the other portion is the, just like I talked about the general obligation, um, the streets loans that are coming from property tax dollars, um, again, we're not levying property because we levy the TIP dollars. You know, about a hundred percent TIP is probably those. Any questions on that? So basically, those are our bond payments, that's what's due.
Like on page eleven, is it like?
Bond, into a bond, and. Yep, at eleven and twelve. And so, on page twelve of debt service, that total amount there is the debt that we're paying from, it, it's the total debt paid.
Two oh eight or four ninety-nine?
Four ninety-nine.
Two twenty-five.
Is that next page, so what you were talking about, one thirty-seven, four hundred? No, that's just, that one thirty-seven, four hundred is, is the general obligation, when you have, it's on my Iowa budget form, but. Let's look and see. So it really should be four ninety-nine, two twenty-five plus that. So I'll come back and. Cause I'll have your, um, when we get together on Monday, I'll have the actual Iowa budget come for this, this time of year. And you'll see how these numbers will tie into those. These are detailed versus the condensed, because we don't turn it in detail for me. We have to follow the Iowa format for their budget. So potentially, with the university, or even at the county, that's, you have to do the same type of formats based on the Iowa forms. Yep. Um, the three hundred is the street improvement fund, and again, that's where the local option sales tax dollars will go in as revenue. That's a hundred and eighty thousand that adds to the, and again, it's reflected as a carryover or cash balance. Um, but we have, what I did in here is I put the one point eight million, um, because at the time when I was working this, that'd be, you know, we're looking at Rainbow and Maxon, um, yeah, so, um, and then I put in our Iowa budget, you'll see when we get that, um, it has, that we're gonna be, we'll have the debt, we'll have to call for debt on that, and that, I'm not gonna get too thick into that, because that'll be something we'll be discussing with our financial advisor when we get to that. But we have to borrow money because we don't have, like, what we would want us to do to practice. We've got to, like, kinda be well, look at that, I thought they're like, this stuff.
Most likely we'll have to, and the thing is, what's gonna happen is.
What will happen is, if, if we don't even start till spring, we'll have a very small portion that'll come out of this budget, and it's already gonna kind of fall.
So it breaks it up.
And it'll break it over two, I think.
Yeah. And that's what happened with, if you remember, that's, and what happened with the phase one project at the, um, City Hall. We had, um, it didn't get done at the time of the school street, so we had a split between those expenditures over two budget. The other thing that we, we would typically look in here too is, um, so with additional revenues, then Adam can pull from that to do more upgrades to his streets, um, because, or curb and gutter type things, um, they're ADA corners, so, um, if they don't have enough coming in, so for example, if we do end up falling short in road use, then we can actually take from the capital improvement, because that third local option sales tax is designated for street upgrades, so. And then if we do a capital project, like, and we didn't put phase two in for City Hall, because we really haven't got any, we, we haven't talked about numbers, or we haven't looked at that, but those are projects that you would put under your capital project too. Um, but the local option sales tax dollar is going in there, it's really supposed to be dedicated to street improvement. So, I'm gonna skip forward, because the rest of the items are there, again, they're, they're, they're funds that are inactive, but they're still playing on the. And so we should be up to water, six hundred. Need to break the one one. So. Page three, um, or, I'm sorry. So page one, and we're looking at water utility fund, so the first page you're looking at there is estimated revenue. So, and again, I'm estimating that based on our, um, history of consumption, um, based on our utility, um, count, and, um, and where we should be. Um, the reason why in twenty-one, twenty-two it ran low, because um, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we were still, we had, we had a difference in our water rates that were not correct. So it ran our revenue, well. So it was running right, and it's, it's kind of hard to explain, but that is what Taylor talked about when we had our, um, he did the special.
Yeah, fire or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Investigation.
Mm-hmm.
So, now, does this, I know, I hate to digress, but it, does this also include potential, or do we need to look at potential rating increases for utilities, or, because I know, aren't we gonna steer stuff, like, this is just, I don't know, are we gonna do like a half percentage each year?
We've got, the rates that just came from a solid wave, so I'm gonna get with you and Diane, because we've got three different scenarios. I think there's really only one to choose from. I, I'd much rather get my rate chewed out once than for a couple of years in a row, so, I mean, that's just me personally, but that's something we'll talk about. But I, I don't think we've built that in yet.
I did not, you did that, okay, yeah.
Because we haven't had that special.
Okay, okay.
And the thing is, is that our budget is gonna be, but the need for like increase.
Yeah.
Because our expenditures are gonna exceed our revenue by about two hundred thousand, which we are sitting at, um, we've been maintaining, Adam's been doing a really good job, he's been maintaining at the end of the year, um, around three hundred thousand, which if you remember, that's what they had explained, that we wanna try to keep there, but this year it'll deplete, it, it most likely deplete that, because he has the equipment that he has to have.
Mm-hmm.
And we didn't reserve for that equipment, so we're gonna pull from the flow of cash base, because we don't have it reserved.
And then didn't we have unexpected expenses with these tree removals too, and that, wasn't that quite a bit?
That's different, that's all it wasted would be is the garbage trucks, the dumpsters, the.
Oh, okay. It don't, that.
Cause also, um, and, and Diane had come in and asked this question, um, so our recycle, so when we started doing that, and we'll get to that when it gets to six seventy, but
Okay.
Um, we'll talk about the recycle program and so.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, um, that's what we're estimating for revenue. Um, and then you get into, um, what you're gonna see here on page three, so you have you have the eight oh five department, which is utility collection, so that's the administrative office, that's where you got.
Right, oh, whoa, eight oh five department.
On page. Yeah, page three?
Yes.
Yes. I didn't see that.
You're right.
So it says six hundred, so what the six hundred does is that stands for water department, that's for water. The six stands for an expenditure, and then the eight oh five, it, it stands, it, look, I can't talk anymore tonight, utility collection billing, so that's your administrative staff.
Okay.
At City Hall. So we're, we're talking about these wages here, you're talking about Cherry, me, and um, the city manager and the rest of the staff, because it is fifteen percent of their wages that are being, that are budgeted from here.
And then the staff at the department is one.
Well, that's another section.
Okay.
Yep. And then, um, for us, I'm not budgeting, I mean, anything outside of just the regular operations.
Sorry, can you say that one more time, so the eight oh five is water, and then the other number?
The six hundred for, so the state of Iowa has charter accounts, and so the six hundred represents a water fund, okay? The eight oh five, um, it represents the, um, city administration, so again, the folks that do the billing, okay, that's what it represents, gotcha. The six, that's the expense, it's telling you.
Let me back what type of expense it is.
Just the, the, it's an expense, when you see, when we start on the first page of water, it says six hundred four.
Mm-hmm.
The four stands for revenue.
Gotcha.
The six always stands for expenditure and maintenance.
The, right after the six hundred?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, and then it's listed on the page up here.
And then, the last four digit is the function.
Yep.
So. And you.
I don't know if you went over that yet in M L A or not, but.
You, they will, no, but I take it through.
So we have somewhere, and, um, they still live at the university, I, it was each where I memorize them all.
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty sad.
Yep.
No, it's not that I'm gonna do that for you, but.
You see a lot.
Yes.
So again, I'm not, I mean, we're not asking for anything, um, outside of, when you look down at the, I, I just will point out, I'm running the the six hundred, six eight oh five, two six four oh seven, the professional fees are running a little bit higher, because that's what we, we pay the attorney fees out of.
Mm-hmm.
We split it out of, again, it's usually fifteen percent of whatever the budget is.
Under contractual service?
Under professional, that could be engineer costs, it's engineer costs, attorney costs. Under professional, that could be engineer costs, it's engineer costs, attorney costs.
Yes, it's six four oh seven.
Or flying ground.
I would go under contractual service and that, yeah.
I missed it. And then um I'm just gonna keep going on page four, under capital outlay. Um I put five thousand dollars in there, um because again, I I. I have to take a look, but we're not gonna put just a five thousand dollar refrigerator. Um but we are potentially looking at upgrading our financial software.
Mm-hmm.
Um to do some more um some more stuff here, so um. I'm just building it in there for now. The Cherry wants her own refrigerator for her office.
She's got so much space.
Yeah. We're gonna build a, we're gonna build a wall.
It doesn't have a currag inside of it, that's a question.
Well, when we get to electric department, that's where we can afford the currag.
Three of them.
Let's take it from the edge. Okay. Now I move into, now I move into operations, and that's Danny. So as the water operator, he's eight one zero, that's where we're talking about very few dots. With the public work staff, the operations staff, that this is Danny and this is um Mac. Their wages are out of the water fund.
Operations executive, right, so.
Mm-hmm.
Department, those expenditures for wage full-time, wage part-time.
Yep.
Part-time, yep, and then you just check out for overtime, yep.
Okay. Because unfortunately, water means you break.
Right, and so that's everybody in the department.
Yep.
In that.
It's not everybody's, it's just, it's fifty percent of Danny's wage and it's a hundred percent of Mac's house wage.
Okay, okay.
Um because they also, because Danny also manages the collect, the sewer, sewer.
Collection, yeah.
The street collection, street, oh, okay, sewer, sewer, but we'll get to that next. So um and again, I mean. Really what you're looking at here is just the operation costs and to operate. Um again, I commend Danny, he's done a really good job with chemicals. Um before, we were spending probably three times the amount on chemical, um one, he upgraded the RO system. So that helped out on the chemical, but at the same time, he's done a really good job of being a more accurate and getting the chemical measures correct. And you can stop me if I want, but watching the budget, that's that's made a difference because. Uh before, it was really pulling down our our water utility, um so he's done a good job of organizing that and. Getting some more efficiency there, so just remember that for your review.
We should go in and, I see the city money.
And he, and in his capital reserves, he's he's preparing for a replacement with our our own filter and.
Okay.
So, because we have, what is it every six?
Six or seven.
Yeah.
Now, within all of the departments, do we account for depreciation, is that uh?
So the only reason why we would account for depreciation is if we were at accrual base and we're a cash basis.
Oh, okay, okay, so we don't. They don't.
And the accrual part comes up in the insurance coverage, so. So we don't have to accrue it on our books because we're a cash basis, so we don't have to accrue depreciation.
Okay.
What we do though, with our insurance coverage is we depreciate the value of equipment, that's what. That's what determines the coverage in our insurance.
Oh.
What what our staff did, if you remember, they did the ERP, the equipment revolving plan. And so they're using similar depreciation schedules.
Okay.
To know what the life expectancy is on that equipment.
Just a plan for improvement or or to replace it.
Just to add on the rate.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And then would be filter, that would be vehicles, that would be, you know, any of those larger capital. You know, improvement, equipment pieces, I should say, capital equipment pieces that are gonna run you ten thousand dollars on water.
Okay.
And then and then if you look at his capital equipment, uh he's got in there a new pickup of their system. I'm step forward to do the planning. And then the hundred and five thousand capital improvements, uh something we'd like to do, it's gonna really depend on. If we have the time, can get put together as the valve exerciser.
What is it?
The valve exercising program, basically, you you bring in a. An outside source and then you set up a program, you have to buy the valve exerciser. Essentially, when we have main bricks, we have thousand network, so this program is set up to find those valves. Exercise your valves yearly.
Okay.
And that keeps them working and it finds your ground tone.
Fancy.
Lets you.
I mean, that that truly sounds like you should be doing that, and.
Every time.
You have that discussion, you should exercise your valves actually, just to make sure it's definitely not because. There's nothing worse than thirty below and you've got a big water main break and.
Nothing.
If you had valves at work, you could isolate to a small engine, so.
Or even even in sixty degree weather.
Yeah.
You'd have shut off five blocks instead of one.
What about hydrants, is that also?
Hydrants are something just to take care of on a daily basis.
I didn't know if there was.
Uh those are, but those are exercised twice a year, that that's already done.
Okay.
Those those get flushed and are exercised and they find out through course of doing that, if I had to replace it.
So replacement is not something, you just have that in your budget basically. And you're. They're like around the maintenance base.
What do I gotta do to send them to be exercised, why should be?
Totally sorry. No, that's one why.
Why seniors have got to be, you're practice mine, ease idols. You said valves, not valves.
Yes.
Yeah.
Valve. Yeah.
Valves, and they have to put up.
Unfortunately, when you start this program, you're wearing a lot of valves, but you also find a lot of.
Different valves, like forty broken on that.
But then immediately replace them right.
Yeah. Just technically, it's a process.
Okay.
But it identifies your grounds, the first thing to do is find the spots where you're down. Where you need valves to be nicely. Spots of town and then, because you gotta go shut the line off for replacing valves too.
Yeah.
So you actually have valves, you handle the valves where you spend twice as much doing line. I mean, they do have the technology to to replace or put valves in line. But they cost twice as much, so you wanna try to make it that, but.
Every once in a while, you have to go to a line room to turn the water.
That's usually an emergency situation, isn't it, like when you absolutely.
Some replacements not usually the sort of urgency.
Oh, and you know about the bit of water maybe or something or.
See, when your, when your water main breaks, you just have to keep going until it's shut off.
Okay.
You if you have to go two blocks down to go to a valve, that's what you do, so that's the emergency situation.
Well, the guy that had all the knowledge, all the broken valves, went out to the door, didn't tell anybody.
Yeah.
All that knowledge is still in his head, don't worry, we're fine enough. If he's.
I thought that was Jim Garner. Not George. Oh, George.
Oh.
I thought, I thought Jim was the one who was.
He just did his thing.
Master of all, you know.
Thankfully, we've been blessed with a couple good good years with less water main breaks.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it may days.
You better not have a hood, now you just said it.
There's no such thing as lover man. That happens, it's gonna happen.
When they kind of have operations.
Yeah.
Or five six seven thirteen.
Just keep on going, and then they don't. Just roll with the punches, so. But again, I I mean, we're gonna move over, I think the other thing we have there, um. Did you have anything else to move for operations, um on page ten, and that is our our bond payment. So we have a revenue bond for water and we just refinanced this one last year, lowered the interest rate. Um so that's a savings to our. And that was also um in council, right, and the fair, and even over here. So we reduced the interest rate and it's going to save the fund of seventy thou, about seventy. Yeah, so and that also helps, you know, kind of hold off that that rate increase. Because we refinanced, but the thing of it is, is that we all know the cost to operate is.
Kind of a lot.
It's gonna be more than that, so and that just will bring up a point when we get there is where. Our financial advisors have always stated that we need to have gradual utility increases. Versus a twenty thousand or twenty percent increase.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna, if you think it's bad now, wait until you put in a twelve or eighteen percent increase in utilities and. You've got a beehive coming at you from the community.
And I, and I'll say this, our our staff that we've had, they they've worked for. A wage less than what they should have been paid. Um they, in order for our our utilities and even our public works for the longest time. Um we've got some very dedicated staff here because they worked for less than what they should have been working for. Um I think, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
No, I'm right.
Last year, you know, last year.
Keep it crazy.
We we did do evaluations and and we exercised to bring up their wages to get them closer. Um you know, again, rewarding them for the work that they've been doing, sustaining their staff. Um but I mean, we still haven't went where we should with their wages, we still have. We still need to come up a little bit more with wages.
And that was an improvement upon the process too, was that was recent.
Correct.
That we passed that, so that made it better, but we still have a lot of it still.
Because some of our folks for ten years hadn't seen any increase except for just cost of living.
Cost of living, yeah.
And they've taken on more responsibilities and more duties, so so I mean.
And then it's.
That's just loyalty, don't find everything, so.
And then on the debt two, doesn't that take off some years or now, does that still keep that calendar? The same, but the the amount of expenditure of our, I I thought it took off some years, but.
It didn't, we were able to, um so we didn't, we didn't change the term of it, but the chances of our, we are gonna have it paid for before.
Okay.
Um than what our term would have been because we reduced the the interest rates.
So.
But they didn't change the final term rate.
Okay.
Because we, most likely what it could do is put us in a position where we could pay the debt earlier.
Yeah.
And and.
Yeah.
But we leave the maturity date still in place.
Okay.
Um then into the sewer operations, so the percentage, so again, that's. The sewer revenue is the page one, six one zero is your revenue, those are the estimated um dollars. That were, this is tied to the water, so what the consumption coming into your home in the water. Is going to calculate what is the, what goes out. So that's how you get the sewer revenue is from water consumption in, because what comes in has to go out. Six one zero, eight one zero.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So six one zero four eight one zero, the um the charges for service there, um. So I'll just, the residential hasn't really changed, um. What's gonna see or what we should see a difference in is the commercial, that is. The bigger portion of that is what somebody foods. And because it hadn't been calculated correctly, um I'm basing this off of having the correct. And based off of what their consumptions have um they've been, because they're backed up to. There for a while, they, even before COVID, they had slowed down and now they're they're backed up. So.
Now, when they start uh any improvements or, you know, upgrades. Is there a possibility they could do that upgrades for like at least one or two and take take that off? Out, running it through.
Well, we're actually, we're working with them right now on the digestion problem. And part of the discussion is we're excited, most likely place we're excited is gonna be down in our facility.
Okay, alright.
And anything basically we're doing, we're talking about upgrading next year or so.
Yeah.
We're actually thinking about trying to build, that's gonna be a huge for a portion of that. Whether that happens or not, I don't know, but.
On there.
My VK has broken down, is like very responsible for like almost seventy percent.
Right.
The upgrade, I'd say he's responsible for thirty. When it comes to tradition, I don't know.
But in the future, I mean, I'm just nervous if they start doing all of these like zero, or they're already trying to do with this. Zero carbon footprint, uh going green and all of that, giving biofuel and stuff. Then does that, eventually, are they gonna just be weaned off of?
I don't think you'll ever see them weaned off, but I.
Actually, it's it's gonna increase their loading quite a bit actually.
Oh, okay.
Because we're gonna actually let this be. Uh the light panel next, that's the off all that type of stuff.
Okay.
So actually, it could almost done. Our loadings, we have to actually run through a screw press.
Oh.
And we're over with it, so.
Okay, okay.
Actually, we might have to build on the water process to move and treat it.
And treat it, okay, oh, okay.
And we're gonna be story, apparently.
That's gonna put it down there. We'll have to buy a field and everything else, because we pretty much plan a lot where we're at, so. We're gonna extra build all of this, so.
Okay.
Ethel, start building, ask question later.
But you know, I heard in the old saying, you know, it's better to ask for forgiveness than beg for forgiveness.
Beg for forgiveness than ask for forgiveness?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Forgiveness.
So um. Then just moving on again, this, the expenditures that we're looking at here is your utility, your collection for utility billing. So those wages there are thirty percent of the administrative staff and the city manager. And then city hall costs. And. Again, just getting to the capital outlay, I just left some numbers in there for potential purchases. Of additional software or the other thought was if we are going to be looking at phase two of city hall. Um just leaving room for some engineer costs for that. Then into the six one zero, six eight one zero, then again, that's under. That's under Danny, that it's fifty percent of his wages, the other fifty percent of his wages. And then it is um Edgar Ortiz. That's under the page six.
Page six, yeah.
So those are their. And really, so here's the thing, Mac, Mac, Eddie and or Edgar, well, sometimes Eddie. Um but Edgar and Mac and Danny all are in the water sewer area. Um they share those response, the both of them share the responsibility, but when it comes to budgeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um just again, it's it's not necessarily that Edgar is all sewer and. And Mac's all water, it's it's just the budgeting, just like the the ranges between the revenue.
On strength.
So it's, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, all of our staff, it's not just that, maybe, you know.
So Danny, when you do your budget, you actually have two you have to do for water and add storm sewer?
Water and sewer collections, that's, yes.
Are we having two separate or?
They're separate in the same, yeah, I mean, I do, but they're separate.
Okay.
It's six hundred and six one zero.
Okay.
So like when, for instance, itemizing something, I have to put six one zero, I can put on this sewer, because they. But yeah, you. You put your expenditures under separate, depending on what you're spending.
You're juggling between two. Two budgets.
Yeah.
In essence, yeah.
In a stormwater.
Yeah, and then the other leads, again, um if you re, if you remember, we talked about this last year. So he researched chemical and so he maintains his the lift stations.
Okay.
And so um so. He contracted with a different chemical that was better for our lift stations and it's not.
It functions.
And more natural, so it's not a chemical driven, it's more of a natural.
Yeah.
Uh yeah, so. Uh, yeah, so, um.
It's more of what like a treatment plant does, it's a biological approach to it as opposed to. What we did before was the floating degreasers, basically. Anything that could, any solids or bats or anything that could go down in your pumps. That was in that amount of floating degreaser, so then you have to go in and back that out.
Oh.
Now, we we administer a treatment monthly that actually eats up the way.
Good.
So it all just transfers through the pumps and.
And then when it gets to Craig.
Just ran more. It also treats the plants on the way.
Oh, good. So do you ever have an an instance in the city where the lines are gravity run versus a lift station?
All of them are.
Oh, okay, I.
I mean, there there are like force made stuff that we're dying on, but a lot of the town is gravity fed. Both of it.
Like they moved to two thousand four hundred new.
Yes, yes, my line.
So I mean, it all, it all basically gravitates to the lifts, lift stations. And then that uses its force and gravity to get to the waste micro.
And you know, but I guess where I'm thinking is where there's a point where you don't have to use the lift station. Like there is a point where it's solely that and that there is no lift station involved, is that, or is that impossible?
I mean, you have to, you have to kind of picture it all as a, a unit functioning together.
Okay.
So you're using gravity in the lift stations to complete your job.
Okay.
Hopefully. Everyone's grabbing.
So that's all, we're building from a more side of town, it's gravity fed. Sound and then.
Then there's spots where it's hard to black back up and then it's gravity fed. The new.
Place of oil, I don't know. Science, which is the actual lift that slows it down.
Downhill, okay.
So it all works together.
Okay, okay, I just don't.
So when shit rolls uphill, we've got problems.
That means you're back up.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the. I I thought I don't know how that works generally.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
I can teach you how to place in the city, if like.
I mean, it's pretty accurate.
But it is, the the most accurate scripture. Of sewer is shit rolls downhill.
Yeah, it is.
It is the most accurate, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm using it directly from our engineers, cause when we were looking at Dutton. That was what they said is. It it won't go uphill, people, you have to have, and the better way to have it is more gravity versus trying to engineer it to pump it, so it works it.
Yes. Or you're spending money.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay.
I mean, you could put a question, a large shell and then get a grab. I think they've got that on grab cost.
Yeah, that's the idea for the sewer, sewer plant, sewer plant is in the lowest bottom of the town.
Yeah, okay, that's that's why.
It's like a more side. And it's close to the Cracks, so that's our discharge.
Yeah.
That place is really cool, if you guys haven't seen it.
It is, I'd like to see if we'd been when I made that.
It is mind boggling.
It is, it's definitely, when I repeat it for it, it's definitely something that you guys haven't seen it.
It's no, we're not bothering already.
That is very true.
Okay, so, um. Danny has um for capital improvements, I think we're gonna use some storm drain work possibly or?
I think we still have to figure out or work out.
I think I just left in there the numbers that we had.
Yeah.
Were at the eighty one hundred.
I I thought we moved the storm drain just to.
The two or two. I have fifteen thousand of those, yeah.
Oh, that's a lot.
But I think the other improvements I left in there from last year, cause I don't know if that we got or not. I just didn't know where we were at.
That's okay. Yeah.
Seven?
Yeah.
And we were getting a truck, sewer truck.
Maybe we're gonna do that hopefully.
Yeah.
We were at last year and it's not.
I know. So.
Supposedly it's completed and it's either ready for a trip or it's waiting shipped.
That's under.
I've been told two different.
That's under.
The capital outlay, yeah. And again, I mean, if we don't spend it, it could have been. Sometimes I just, I don't know, but what we said is it's just better to have it there. Um, again, I mean, it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen, we're gonna have to replace it and.
When you have to do work on the lifts these things, is that you like involve with like water meters found or is that? Is that something you have to put into your improvements?
Um, that would be just maintenance, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, but it always depends on what.
Depends on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, if you have to replace the whole lift station, I know the two hundred thousand I left in there because we. We had, um, we still haven't figured, I mean, we had some discussions out there about that lift station.
We talked about the station that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At the north end.
Yeah, and I left it in there just in case we had to move forward or not.
We had a replacement.
Do.
Or or Bill did you?
I'm in a lift station. Yeah, I've been at a lift station.
Right in the middle of the baseball.
Probably.
Of pitchers, man.
Nickel of it, well, that's where Leo said would be ideal. Like, no.
Why not the whole thing? I don't know, the sweet life.
And I think the other thing was is generators, we were still working on.
For the lift station.
For the lift stations, and that's what I left in top of that too, yeah. Okay. Any questions?
Are you ever going to bring back the meters, the water meters again, like we had. Your.
The yard meters?
Yeah, yard meters.
No, cause the ones that we have used were old ones.
Yeah.
Come off our old, old system.
Yeah, antiquities, yes.
And or the problem was when they broke.
Yeah.
Or we can't fix them.
I didn't know if there was such a beast to get something that was up there.
They make them now, they're expensive, but.
Or is it too costly?
Well, because you can, because honestly, first, I mean, you can put in a separate meter just for like your vision purposes and those things.
Cause what we're talking about.
But it has, between us and plum and.
I actually time out for special events like the. Turd Cherry does uh a garden, which they.
Community garden.
Which what, what me and Cherry do, well, what we did last year was we took their average, subtracted that from the sewer.
Okay.
And that was basically, so we took their average and their raise, subtracted that.
And readyed or whatever.
Yeah. And then you just did a base sewer.
That's what they essentially have done ever since they started here with the community garden, the first year, they still have that irrigation meter and they brought it in, but then after that. It was just the difference.
Maybe can get one, it's only a couple hundred bucks to get a nice acre of them. If we wanted to do that, it's.
But what we talked about was charging. The customers.
Absolutely, I mean, whether or not the homeowner wants it or not, if they want it, and that choice, what then they pay for.
I mean, do you have our pool, it was an advantage to have that.
Yeah.
You know, because when we build pool, then we would not pay for the sewer in them.
Well.
The best thing is that's the worst, that's just to have the. Our our new, since our taken care of.
And now we have that in our utility building stuff that we build pool and we have the gallonage, we can refund that.
Yeah.
Yeah, portion.
Yeah, okay.
It's so much easier.
These are just coming out of the. Yeah, they got to show us the gallonage on their pool.
Oh, okay.
Okay, got it. And the other thing we've done is for our master gardeners, um, we recommend that they reach out to a corner and they can have a. Have a a meter installed to track it, just like you were talking about.
Yeah.
And then again, we just have to verify that it's calibrated or that.
Yeah.
Most people find it's not, it's the, it's not worth it, it's only worth it when you forget to turn your hose off like and.
It broke.
No, whatever.
No, they were in the hole.
I'm just kidding. So that's what we usually have is folks, unfortunately, they're they're.
Fossils breaks.
Fossils breaks, yeah. Or they forget to turn their hose off and it runs a lot and runs and.
Right.
And this, just so I know, if I get this, it's because that water goes into the ground, not through our pipes, so you want to. See how much that you are putting into the ground instead of using the sewage to ground, so you can get refunded.
Yep.
For that amount.
Because on our billing or billing, the water consumption, the sewer consumption is based off of water, so if you have ten thousand water, but five thousand of it went into the pool. If we don't know that, then you're still charged for ten thousand, but if you give us a heads up and let us know, then we can refund that.
Five thousand for the pool, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's, it actually just happened last year, is that when we put that into place?
Yeah.
Last year, because before that, that wasn't something that was done.
Again, I mean, COVID and we had our pool closed and that pretty much up the percentage of people, homeowners, purchasing pools. And so, just like Sherry said, you really had a lot of grand across city board, and most people are really, you know, they they want to work with the fire department to have them come out and fill the pool. Um, cause that's a faster way of getting it done, but depending on the size of your pool, so.
I didn't know if the the fairgrounds did that, cause I imagine they use a significant amount of water.
They not, they've never brought anything up on that, so it's, most of their stuff would be done just as everybody else is in that one.
Okay. Because you know, a lot of that water goes in the ground. I think they have standpoints down there, I think they have something wells.
Or water address.
Yeah.
Yeah, they they have something different, I would have to look at the billing portions of it, um.
I think.
But it's set up different.
Yeah, I think the whole backwater is like the community set up.
The community, the activities set up.
Activity, yeah. I think they have, I think they have the old well systems that they use for like livestock and for like drawing.
Oh, okay.
I think they have their own like decoal there.
Okay.
Cause I know they put in restrooms and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and sinks and.
Yeah.
But it's faucets.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, no, I would, I can look into it to see how it's actually set up, but. I think there's something different, I just don't know.
Cause same as the the house right before, or it used to be Grace Gardens, right before you get into the cemetery, they had their own. For a while, they had their own septic and water well there too, and then they had to, something had happened and then they had to connect to the service. But there's some of those houses, I don't, there were some houses down there that still had their own well and their septic systems. But it was like if the septic went bad, then they had to connect into the sewer.
Or the house was sold.
If the house was sold, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had a situation like that with Mr. Klein's, Bob Klein's house said sold. And. Cause they were getting.
They.
Water from the. The tower, yeah, then there's a by path or an easement or something.
Yes, yes, easily.
But so as long as that, as long as the clients own the house, then they weren't built for water.
Yeah.
But what what happened is is when they sold it, then that that easement or that agreement went away. And so because the new owners were like, we're not supposed to pay for water. It's like, yeah, you were sorry. Sort of rented for Mr. Klein at the same. At that, so though, I mean, there's still some of those old. Like the situations and.
Out there.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
The sewer.
There is. Um, the wastewater treatment, um, so again, all of the sewer revenue coming in is is what is. Um, is over the expenditures here, so we just have one sewer revenue that covers all of these portions.
Okay.
Okay, and so the wastewater treatment plant wages, again, that's Craig, um, Ken. And Jeremy. And, um, one time we held out the budget for an additional, but I believe. Um, they've been able to maintain and and do what they're doing down there with what they have, so. And again, and kudos to Craig, Craig runs a really tight budget, he. He watches his numbers and he calculates his percentages of increases and decreases, so. Um. He's very meticulous and. I appreciate that.
So it was four hundred thousand of the Craig's contract.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah.
And he, you know, and as far as improvements and things like that. Doesn't ask for unless he knows they absolutely do, or it's something that's gonna be regularly funded in our, so. Not that any of them do, I just want to make back there, every one of these folks that I have worked with. In the, and since I came here in two thousand twelve, they've done a phenomenal job of not overspending or just spending money cause it's there. Um, they're truly not asking, in fact, there's a lot of times, um, especially. An Adams department that they've gone without, just to make the, you know, just to appease. Management to make that budget look better, but you know, he he's went short stat, he's, you know, so. And that's typical, when you've got a supervisor that's got administrative work, that they're out working. In the in the streets and things and they've got to do their administrative work too, so. And staying on top of certifications and things, so. But you know, they all do a very, very good job. And that's what I said, when we look at our budget and where we're at today compared to ten years ago. It's it's these folks here, you know, they're they're doing that financial work too.
Can we connect?
Numbers to tell.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
I'm gonna keep going here.
So, um, so the Craig, I mean, all he has, um, he's got some, he's got a truck that's coming in. Um, and he needs a D mixer, is his capital. And again, Craig doesn't ask for it, much needs it, so.
That's definitely.
And I don't know, I don't know, but how do you get to spend that kind of money on a mixer and I can't spend five thousand on a food?
Well, that's a highly expensive.
Well.
Plus you have, well, plus you have, they're gonna give you more, see if it's.
It's mixer makes money.
Mixer.
Yeah, your mixer makes money.
Mixer, that's perfect.
Perfect for mud pies.
No.
Awesome.
Who pies?
That ain't what.
You can't, you can't get through this much without talking about food, I'm just saying, I'm trying to make it. No, cause it happens and that's, I made one of these though.
I didn't even know five thousand dollar refrigerator existed, so there you go.
Oh, God.
Only two, honey. Especially if you own a little, it's, you know.
It'll come to you too.
What is he?
Yeah.
Everyone plays music. Jeez. We can play, we can put this on it.
It's fashion.
I don't, I'm.
It can't be drawn.
You could see inside it when you're grocery shopping to see what's inside your.
Not a joke, though.
We got a six.
Awesome.
Did it have a little danger scare?
I still have to.
No. It was on sale for like. A certain amount and then we got a certain amount of girl in all those cars. Yeah, suck it pretty much, yeah.
Hey.
Yeah. Suck it. We bought an entire kitchen, all day. Oh, wow. At sixty five total.
They work, they both work hard, they deserve a.
Yeah.
I did it for it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like.
It was awesome.
That's why.
That's who she was talking about.
Right. So, um, so I don't know if you have any other questions for Craig, um, but. Then, um, next up, you have a lecture. And in the lecture on page one, there's your revenues and we are again, these are just estimating. And a next, and the reason why I say I'm, I can stay about the same because we haven't had a a name increase. But we have, we should be getting close to the lectures, so.
Yeah, I, they have all the information, he said, if there's anything, I'll see you till lecture, I think they're working on that right now.
And I'm gonna anticipate, I wouldn't be surprised if we have. At least a ten percent of the revenue. So that's probably being. Two, that's probably two and low.
Yeah.
So the, on page, uh. Page one, page two of the electric utilities, um, or mental expenditures is the top personal services, is that city admin?
That's city admin, yeah, and so it's fifty five percent. Of the, so how it breaks down for our wages, um, so. Of the, so how it breaks down for our wages, um, so. The city manager and myself and Jacob and some of Nick are five percent of the general fund.
Okay.
So then the rest of the staff is broken down through the business, the utility, because that's the primary work that they're doing.
Yeah. Okay.
And, and again, that fifty five percent is the cost of the, you know, the software to do the building. And the work, and the work. And then under that, it's included benefits. Is that just in benefits for the reflective of staff only?
Okay.
And then under the building ground maintenance, looks like it's only fifteen thousand, is that correct?
What?
Building ground maintenance?
Yeah.
Is that all that, or is I I put it out there a little higher. Um, because we still have, um, so one thing, I I we have some possibly concrete work that we need to take a look at. For parking.
Mm-hmm.
And I haven't had time to talk to Dave about it, but so that section between the police department's garage. And then where the American Legion garage is at.
Yeah.
There's a small section in there that's just grass. And, um, so I was gonna look at getting an estimate to get it concrete. So that would allow more of our staff and our, again, our utility books that they got closer to the door that they can pull in. But it may, yeah, but just not knowing what what the timeframe is on things too. Because technically, we have staff that'll pull when we're there in park, if parking's hard, and we shouldn't because we're not. We don't allow our community members to park on the grass, so we should be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and likewise, our police department here in a gravel parking, and again. That's not within code because we're not supposed to have gravel parking. So there might be some concrete work that we have to look at.
Well, the reason I brought that up, because I thought that the bill we needed from our.
Needs a rug.
And I.
But that.
And I didn't think on the next, I didn't think, oh, oh, and I didn't think fifteen was enough.
Well, that's, that's city hall. That's, that's city hall budget. That's not.
You're looking at the electric portion of the city hall.
But that's the city hall. I was thinking it was his.
Oh, no, you're looking at the city hall right now.
Yep, yeah. City hall.
Was it administration?
That's that administration portion of it.
Yeah. Not operations.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's why I was confused.
They minus that a little, it's quite a.
Their their buildings, like.
Well, it's about ten.
Really?
Yeah, for building, for building ground maintenance. Uh, honestly, it's, it's, uh, basically keeping the weeds down and that type of stuff, building the ground. Unless something goes to hell, but I mean, the rug has to be done, but that's already, that's under something else.
Okay, okay, okay.
If that's what you're facing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's under something.
So again, in the, in the utility, the building side of it, when you get to page four, the capital outlay. Um, I just left some numbers in there, um, because again, Dave and I haven't had an opportunity. Um, for equipment reserve is just reserving towards future purchases of, we may have software upgrade, server upgrade. Um, the twenty thousand for capital equipment. Again, it's just, um, I just have some equipment stuff that we need to go over that we didn't have an opportunity to go through. Um, during the equipment, um, computers, I think with Nick, we have everything updated with our computer equipment. Um, and I view our servers okay, but I just put it there just in case. We still have some IT and server issues, things that have to be. And I think we also talked about security cameras is in there too. So, and then the capital improvement is just saying, you know, I didn't know what we faced too. And then, um.
Before we move to the next one, can you tell me about how much more time you think we have? Because I I basically, I have to give a presentation.
Yeah.
From like maybe seven ten to seven fifteen to seven thirty, that's it, that's all I have to do. So I can step out, but you think we're gonna go longer than that, maybe, because I feel antsy, we're gonna be antsy. I didn't know folks want to take a break.
Yep, or it's worse.
It is.
Or below, we got some ways.
All ways.
Oh, well, then do you want to take a break? And then, or do you just keep moving?
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, I think you want to keep moving and seeing if if you see pop out, I will pop back, just, yeah.
So.
Question, did it long?
Um.
It can be done in twelve minutes.
All right, let's do it. So Ed is next. And, sorry, interrupt me.
No, you're okay.
We just placed it.
I didn't, that's not, I'm good. They're a tough crowd, I told you.
Um, again, this is the operations, so this is Ed and, um, Damian and. John and Ryan.
And we have God in there.
Not. So if they have, he wants additional staff.
Yeah.
But I didn't know that in. That's not in this budget.
You didn't.
So we have to amend it.
Mm-hmm.
It's not at the three oh nine?
Mm-hmm. No, that's just. So, and again, I mean, I know they're doing the rate study based on that amount of employees. So, but I'm without having the rate study, knowing that our revenue is gonna be.
It's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Because they are processing everything that was sent to them.
I'm gonna let you guys talk, because you two need to talk on that. That's not me.
You do.
Well, well, it's approved last year.
But I don't have it in this year.
That's fine.
Okay. Because I leave the two of you to talk about that.
Okay.
Because I didn't send in on your budget names, so. Um, again, benefit costs, um, then getting down into. The repair maintenance utilities, again, I can talk to this, but. He's got, I don't know, what what you guys are discussing, but the the funding he has in here is tree removal, tree trimming. You know, that's the maintenance that has to be done. And, and maybe he stayed pretty, pretty close to that number with the contractor that we work with. And I'll just let Dave take over from there, because. We can kind of talk a little bit more. Because I pulled the numbers that we had on.
Well, I think we like, I think we doubled money on doing line work and goal changes.
Yeah, actually, you're going to have an extra, one more employee is.
We're reminding you on a jet, we bumped the generator repairs and maintenance quite a bit.
Well, the generator repairs and maintenance used to sit at a hundred thousand dollars. And over the course of, uh, in terms of managers, it got trimmed down to basically almost nothing compared to what it used to be. If we have anything go wrong with them, bring anybody in to work on it's. It's, it's a ton of money to get them to come in. And so without the budget line item there, basically, if we're gonna have to have that, we're gonna have to bring back your government budget to do that.
To get it done here.
Instead of just getting it done and paying for it.
Okay.
We showed more of a true cost, only is operating supplies in previous years. Um, like on the capital equipment, um, looking at the trencher.
Yeah.
And a little bit of all the security cameras, um.
And you had a question on the contract services? That was, oh, you see the solar? Yeah.
Yeah, solar. Solar, we have a main contract with them, they can, and they can do well, spring and fall, PM. On the turbine, on the turbine, yeah.
So there's a couple of things that Ed wanted to get up to, I I think we changed something on the street lighting of bowls. You you were, everything's different now, so we changed those as well.
Well, yeah, because we were pulling, uh, we, well, we did that, we started doing that last year, we added a streetlight. Right. Number in there, because we were pulling that out of, uh, system improvement innovation, that was all. Right. The world instead of coming out of that.
Which is why we bumped up the streetlight.
Which is why that got on top, because that's where it's supposed to be coming out of instead of where it was, so that's why that's the way that it is.
What line is that?
It is.
It's that. It would have been the floor.
Oh.
It's on page five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, it's definitely gonna be there for like maybe another year or maybe a year and a half, because. Once our streetlights, we've got them all up.
We'll need to do it for a while.
That might have to go back down.
And again, we don't have, I mean. All in, I mean, just being honest, we're anticipating a budget amendment. Um, we just had so many disruptions trying to get this put together. Um, so I was, I was honestly rushed, so I know that there's gonna be some amendments, so. Do you have any other questions for Ed? The engineering under contractual services, is that?
Yeah.
The.
PHMG.
PHMG. Does that need, is there anything that needs to be in that number? It would be zero, and you know, that was something that.
Uh, that most of all, I think they're called stuff, all of yours is professional.
Professional, oh, okay.
So that would be, uh, I I suppose if they were gonna, maybe if they were gonna come in and do like a, maybe an engineering study or a, maybe like a, uh, uh. Generation study to move forward with installation of more generation, what that's gonna take, the problem with all of that.
Okay, and we also have our compliance reporting that they, um, just like would be strength him. So we have, um, with the HMGJ handles some of our compliance reports that.
Yeah.
I'm utility board and our state compliance.
Okay.
So they assist with some of the administrative work with that as well.
Okay, okay.
So then the the one on page eight, where it says contractual services. What is that actually for? I mean, do we need that in there? I don't know. Actually, we haven't really. HMG, yeah. About capital outline, I I.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't spent, you know, hasn't anybody spent out of outline out of this year. And they're going fifty five dollars in trivia to you, so.
I didn't know if that was something that needed to be like.
A little bit, yeah.
I'm gonna pop out, I'll be there in maybe thirty minutes, maybe show us. Oh, that, because that was, so that area is for when we do the large, like, for example, the switch here project.
Okay.
So, uh, eight twenty is geared towards a large capital project. And that would be our million dollar cost base.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and that was something that probably just carried over from an engineer cost.
Okay.
For that project, all right. Got it. Yeah, eight twenty stands for, um, the enterprise, those are the large projects.
Okay.
And then the eight thirty code under there, that's your bonds. So then we end up, your expenditures full page, and then we're onto solid waste. And solid waste is also managed in some of Adam's wages come out of just a small percentage. Uh, because we wanted to make sure we had a little more to a, um, for additional staffing for the solid waste department. And so that is going to be Adam. Let me remember everybody.
John, Brayden, Justin.
Justin, Brayden, Dylan. So.
So that's Jeff's department's staff.
Hmm, but they all, but Eddie works through, I mean, he does encourage as well, but, yeah.
And what about, does that have any reflection of the admin staff?
The what?
Yeah.
No, no, no. It does not. Because solid waste just isn't a large enough revenue in order to use a percentage.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it's, we're, you're, we're required to remove the garbage from our community.
Mm-hmm.
The problem is, is it's really difficult to. To charge the money it takes to actually operate that. Yeah, and that's what we're up against now, I mean, the the equipment, the garbage truck costs, the staffing costs, the dumpsters, all of those. I mean, they're very, very expensive items, but most folks don't understand, you know, they're not, they don't. You know, they think if they pay twenty two dollars, it's outrageous.
Mm-hmm.
But twenty two dollars for each household doesn't cover what it costs to get that garbage from. Because then you have your tipping fees, you have your location fees, your transportation costs.
Yeah.
I mean. It is the, it's like having the pool, it's a business activity, it is, just why don't we just dump it all in the pool?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a really difficult, it just is a really, really expensive.
Okay.
Cost, but you have. That we have to pay for these expenses and then the rates are gonna happen.
Okay.
So getting into it, our revenues are not reflecting what's some recommended changes, they're recommending what's currently there.
We can get expenses, we just don't have all the rates.
Yeah. So our revenue, we're based on what we've seen, it's at five hundred and fifteen thousand. And we'll be over to the expenditures. And again, I'll commend Adam because he runs a lean budget, he he watches it as close as he can, but. You know, those garbage trucks are expensive to keep running and keep fixed. Um, it's really difficult for him to control, um, the the fees that it takes to go to the landfill. Because if folks are not recycling, then there's more weight going to the landfill, like increases our costs. Also, when we took on the recycling program at that time, if you remember, and Adam and Diane can explain this probably a little bit better than I can. But there was a market for recycle.
Very little.
Very little, and as soon as we pulled the trigger and went to the curbside recycling, then there was none.
It tanked.
It tanked.
So now.
We were having to pick for recycling and get that.
So now they were, so, because we had a a agreement with Scott County, is that right? We were taking it.
They actually took on six months of our debt.
Mm-hmm.
To wait for the market to come back up. And we got to start paying for it.
Yeah, so now it's.
We're getting about fifteen hundred a month or something, someone's.
Yeah, yeah, it's, we're starting to get, is it bouncing a little?
September, I think.
Yeah, since September, I think a little bit backfired in. But you have to understand though, I mean, we, you know, it was appreciative that they took on the debt and then we started having to pay. But when we originally took on the program, it was anticipated that we would have revenue to cover the cost of taking the fur. So. And then we didn't do anything to look at raising rates to stay with the cost.
Mm-hmm.
Or reserving for another garbage truck at the time.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it just, it didn't help our situation.
Stay extended.
Now, the one thing I didn't put in this budget this year, because I think I have one more year left on. The solid waste needed to repay the utilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I thought we had talked about. And I'll have to go back and look at my notes, but I thought we had talked about just saying, because if I put that in there, you know, then that's gonna drive down our revenue even. Worse. Because by the time we get through our expenditures, and these are things that Adam has, it's the things that the department has to have. We're at seven hundred fifty seven thousand, or no, eight hundred thirty four thousand. And we're only bringing in five hundred fifteen thousand in revenue.
Yeah.
But we have to have those trucks, there's not a, it's not a question of wanting them, we need them.
Those trucks are not half of that cost, and and the problem is, you know, Adam, if there's repairs on his trucks, it's, you know, the, having bought new trucks.
Rearload us.
You know, instead of buying a used rear, ruined my brand a little last time. He spent more money on repairs, we probably couldn't have had a truck. Had we, you know, not had, put money into repairs, so. Had we, you know, not had, put money into repairs, so it it's just time to bite the bullet.
And we're, yeah.
And it and it and it was down again this week or last?
Uh it was in, it was in the shop again, it's still running, but it's not right. They couldn't get it to do what it was doing on us, but it was gonna keep going, yeah, it's no issues.
So, yeah, and so when I recommend the, that we, you know, look at a resolution to to finalize that debt between that internal. We're only talking for this year, we're only talking thirty thousand dollars, but that's thirty thousand dollars that the solid waste can pour to pay. Where the other utilities are setting in a decent position, they're in a better position to forego that. Um then the solid waste is paid. Um but I'll I'll work with our financial advisor to put that information together. So that council can actually see what we're saying we're gonna forgive. Or if we wanna say, we're not gonna forgive it, but we're gonna allow those rates to, we'll delay it and we'll allow those rates to catch back and. And see what it looks like from there. So I think uh of course, so like July one or something, by July one, don't we need to factor in new rates so that they take effect?
My expenditure is gonna be the second before July one, you know, I'd I'd like to do it by June, but but we need to have that discussion and then.
Okay.
Take some full counsel and have a look on.
Okay. So the only other one we have is stormwater, and stormwater is a new utility. Um and I have, I we have to do some work on it because the ordinance working does not match our utility bill.
It's added.
It's not in here.
Oh, yes.
And it is gonna be on the state budget for revenue. And I just took a guesstimate about what the revenue looks like, but there are some things that we we pushed that. Not council, but that ordinance got pushed so fast that there is information in there that is not in line with what our bill is. Uh we also, there was not making clear if he was gonna do the calculations for the EDR.
EDR.
EDR use. Because, yeah, because there was nothing discussed or agreed upon in the past few years. Because somebody has to go and calculate to figure out what their stormwater cost is gonna be.
Okay.
And in most communities, it's always your engineer.
Well, yeah, but wait a minute here.
Well, he did it during the study.
Yeah.
But then he, but nothing was ever decided about how or when or what.
If there was some, but it would be stuff like that.
Right.
But I know we had picked the number that was the average, there were median, not for the commercial.
Not for.
But not for for the.
For your residential.
Your residential. But not the commercial.
So I don't care, so we have the rating of the work, because we know what those measurements are.
Would it, would it be, did he give an indication for commercial and all that?
He just gave an estimate.
But not for.
And the rate in that study or whatever they just put together, the presentation. He hadn't physically went down and did the work of it, he just did a estimate of a great, um, period of.
I don't think in that.
Why would be a lot of.
I don't know why you're gonna take this course.